Welcome to the third meeting of the year. Today is February third, twenty twenty five. Alyssa, can you please do the publication?
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of Public Law nineteen seventy five, notice this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, South River, has been published in the whole industry being on January fifth, twenty twenty five, posted on the Mr. Building Bulletin Board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building on sixty one Main Street, South River.
Local.
Mayor Gindi?
Here.
Councilman Valas?
Here.
Councilman DeSantis?
Here.
Councilman Zemian?
Here.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes, here.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Here.
Council President Seola?
Here.
Please stand next to us, please, if you'd like.
The Constitution of America. The United States of America. And the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pay standing for Mona Silas. You may be seated. We have one presentation for today. Volunteer Memorial Park, an exclusive playground and fitness court, NJDEP Green Acres Program Grant Application. Mr. DeSantis?
So here's your agenda for the presentation. I'll just go to the next slide. I don't read the agendas at work either, so. What is Jake's Law? For all of you who don't know, Jake's Law incentivizes counties, municipalities to build inclusive playgrounds for children and adults with disabilities. The term Jake's Law refers to Jake's Place, a playground in Cherry Hill, which was created in honor of Jacob Cummings-Nasto, who passed away unfortunately due to complications of heart surgery at the age of two and a half. This is a rendering of Jake's Place, the actual facility in Cherry Hill that they built, and that was the inspiration for this fund through the government. Our concept plan is for Volunteers Park, which is also known as Bell Park. It's at the bottom of Johnson Place along Bryan Street, and you can get entry from Cam through Oak and also Herbert Street, which is a short street that comes off on the other side over there. This park already exists, as you can see it, and the square in the middle would be where this playground is concepted to go. And this is an actual rendering of what the park is intended to look like. We're gonna work through the particulars of the different views of how things will be. But the key here is that this is inclusive for anyone with any disability. It includes all children that can use it, so you don't have to be part of that ADA to use the facility, but it does accommodate anyone with those special needs and allows them to play just like others. And we're also looking to put in a fitness area in the more towards the hockey part of the park. And this is for adult fitness and a little bit of outdoor activity that people can utilize to, you know, improve their health and better their body and mind. So as part of this, we have to do an environmental impact assessment. The affected resources, proposed improvements onsite include the construction of an inclusive playground within the developed area of an existing park. The project aims to increase recreational use and access to the playground for the surrounding community. Due to the location of the proposed improvements in a previous developed portion of the park, there are no anticipated impacts to the surrounding area or resources. Tree removal consists of eight trees surrounding the playground and walking path, four of which are dead, two of which will be removed for walkways, and two of which have exposed roots and already present a tripping hazard. To rule these trees will help ensure the safety of the residents using the park and playground. Short term and long term impacts will include those associated with the temporary construction efforts that will occur as a result of the project improvements. This includes limited slash restricted access to the playground and temporary increase in noise and traffic levels to the playground during construction. No long end- long term impacts are anticipated. Recreation site use. It is anticipated that the proposed recreational improvements will encourage further use and enjoyment of the park and increase the site use. Effective environmental features, there are no anticipated impacts to the adjacent environmental features. No regulated areas are located within the project site. There are no proposed impacts to threatened or endangered species due to the location and scale of the project. As far as permits, no NJDEP permits will be required for this project. For the natural heritage database request, the proposed project will not impact any underserved portion of the project site. A nat- natural heritage database search for this project was requested on December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and we just received that last week uh as publicated. Sea level rise impacts. This project will not be impacted by sea level rise as there are no bodies of water within the immediate vicinity of the project site. Mitigation measures. All necessary best management measures will be taken to mitigate any potential adverse impacts to the project site and surrounding area. A total of, this is a redundant, but it's part of the process that we go through. A total of eight trees will be removed from the project site, including four dead trees, two trees which will remove for walkways, and two trees with exposed roots to ensure the safety of park visitors. The project site is located outside of any regulated areas. I just wanna say that when you look at these types of projects, as a borough, we we spend money and we get or we get something back for that money. With grants like this that match your funds two, three, four times that money, we're getting better money spent. We're spending money on one thing and we're getting something four times as good. That's something that as a borough that we have to try to do with more and more of. This money is out there. Uh we're a small borough, but number one, when we spend the money, we want it to be spent correctly. Number two, and more importantly, this park will be accessible for those that cannot just walk into another park, go up a curb, climb a ladder, go down a slide. These children and adults have some special needs and this park will accommodate that. So it's an important philosophy for us as a Borough Council and as a Parks and Recreation Department that we can get those people something that they can access and utilize because they can't just show up like most of us can. So it's very important at the core of it that we look into these grants. We do our best. We're working with Jason, Terry, and Jessica at the Recreation Department to apply for these grants and to get as much money as we can to further utilize our budget and get the best offering for all of our residents, including every single person from those who knew or do not need this park. They will all benefit. So that is our part of what I'm explaining. If anyone has any public comment, they're welcome to speak.
Thank you, Mr. DeSantis. Uh you must just leave your name there.
Timonie Brass of thirteen Darrell Street. So part of my comments are from the Environmental Commission and part of it is me personally. So I'm gonna start with the Environmental Commission. So I'm gonna start with um two questions. It is a worthy um way to spend money. I agree with you. I just can't believe. But the surface that the playground is gonna be on, is it impervious? Is it, what, penetratable by rain?
I wasn't involved with that, so perhaps someone else can answer that.
Let me answer that question.
Um, your question.
Dora floor. It's in the uh all the other playgrounds that have been renovated.
So is it like a plastic?
Rubber, I think.
It's a rubber, so it's in it's impervious. Yeah.
All right. Excuse me, there. Can I make a comment about that?
Sure.
It is pervious. Water goes right through it. Um I was involved with a project like that very recently. I'm assuming the same company, Blue World, if I'm not mistaken, is the company doing it?
Yes.
Um they use, it's a rubber surface, but it's very porous and they put a layer of uh bluestone underneath to let water drain. As a matter of fact, the playground that I was involved with had flooding issues for about eight years now. We put this in, no flooding, it's gone away.
Is that the one?
Because it it disperses the water.
Okay, so another one of my questions, um on the slide before I think on page one, one of the things listed is general landscape improvements. Can we uh what what exactly are the landscape improvements?
Do we have a plan on your part?
Um. The walking paths.
Mm-hmm.
Um fitness court, the playground, and then there will be like once the construction is done, we'll we'll bring it back to like planting grass. We put on our um plan that we are willing to replant trees to replace those that were taken down.
Yeah.
So we have to see what everything looks like once the the improvements go in first.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so a couple concerns I have, um so it's not impervious, that that concern went away. Um so the four revived trees that have to be taken out because of the walkways. Um just so you're aware, they're very large trees, so I did some research and, you know, I don't know the real deep science, but these are the facts I found on the internet, that a twenty inch diameter tree, which is what all these are, removes forty four pounds of carbon dioxide a year. Um it absorbs two hundred gallons of water a year and produces a hundred thousand gallons, you can measure oxygen, gallons of of oxygen a year. So, you know, I feel um it is a big impact, but um age assuredly that if if we don't get the grant, that the trees, those trees will stay and the ones that have to be removed will be removed. So those are um pretty much the concerns. I do have um just a suggestion, like I would like the four trees to be replaced. This project can be modified, if that's possible, possibly. I mean, big trees, it takes a long time for them to come out of. Um the other suggestion I had, um you've all seen little libraries, like that might be a nice addition, like maybe on the walkway. And I actually have a picture of like a little library. It's like a prefab one that um Little Tights makes. It's like a hundred and fifty dollars and it's easy to install, not me, but somebody. So that's a suggestion. And also, I noticed when I was there, on the part where you're gonna put the handicap parking, there's like two totems. If you don't know what a totem is, it's like a tree that the canopy's been cut off, so you just have like twenty feet of, which is arms to be handed to them. So there's two totems that it would improve the appearance if those like that.
They're probably, they're probably damage.
I don't know if they're on private. Are they on private property or is that?
No, they're they're actually probably damage.
Okay. Okay, um so in um my own, this is, all right, that's the Environmental Commission comments, my own personal comment. Um so we have Gorkowski Park that is getting an inclusive playground and it's being put in in the square. Is that correct?
That is correct. Time's up, but.
Oh, sorry. Um just real quick. So, you know, we have to, and we got a grant for that, right? So what is the cost of that gonna be to the taxpayers?
Seven hundred and forty thousand, it was a total cost in the grant scheme, six hundred and twenty.
So a hundred and something.
So we got a hundred dollar down money. If when we go out and do the final project, it might be less than the seven hundred some thousand, so.
Okay.
Hundred is at the top level.
And that's, is that a more, is that a walk, a bigger project than the one at um?
Probably the same type.
So, okay. Fifteen. All right, I'm just pointing out, it is a worthy pursuit, but we already have one going in, the Gorkowski Park, so um it's something to think about. Thank you.
Anyone else else on the uh part? First call, second call?
Motion to close ballot.
Second.
Opened by Councilor Governor uh Seola, seconded by Councilwoman Senator Valas.
Ballin' Favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to segue around with this agenda only because I am at a uh legal constraint with one of our applicants. Uh I'm going to go into closed session first. Alyssa.
Resolution twenty twenty five eighty five, whereas section eight of chapter two thirty one, Public Law nineteen seventy five, permits the exclusion of the general public from the meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor and council of the borough South River, or of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, then therefore it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough South River and the county of Middlesex, the state of New Jersey, that the public be excluded from the year and after, subject to subject matter, and that such subject matter to be so discussed in as follows, property acquisition and litigation. Be it further resolved at such record of the above discussion, where the public confidentiality is no longer required, Borough Council of the Borough South River may or may not take formal action at the conclusion of the executive session.
Motion by Councilwoman Valas, second, seconded by Councilwoman Kretchinsky.
Councilman Valas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
We're gonna go into closed, we've got our agenda.
Like the look in there, like still peeling.
Motion to open, motion to open, second. Motion by Council President.
I'm not.
No.
Yeah, me too.
All right, let's go. Sorry. A second by uh Councilwoman DeSantis.
Ballin' Favor?
Aye.
I feel scared.
Um, all right, we're gonna go into agenda session. First, we're we're gonna be first first reading uh discussion. Andrew.
Uh sure, we're gonna, we're starting with the first reading. Joe, do you wanna take that with a handbag?
Yeah, the first one is, I believe, the cap bank ordinance. Uh this is an ordinance we do every year annually. That gives the borough flexibility to run for the budget process. Uh the state allows two point five percent increase on what they call inside the cap, which is most of your salaries and insurance, everything like that. We do this ordinance, we can increase it to three point five, and if not utilized, you can bank it for two years forward if we need it down the road. So this is something we do annually every year. It's requested by the state to do something like this also. The other one is uh first reading of the HCD ordinance. This is from last year's HCD meeting. We finally got approval to earmark those funds, so you have first reading, which was for uh traffic safety signs and approval to Gorkowski Park.
Uh Mr. Mayor, uh twenty twenty five seven is an amendment to the redevelopment plan. That's twenty five Main Street LLC one. It was actually on uh a couple agendas. Last year, we finally came to an agreement with redevelopers, so we are putting that one on for first reading. Uh Mr. Mayor, did you want me to go through real quick the ordinance is on for second reading also?
Yes, you can.
Uh twenty twenty five dash one, uh that is the street closure of Collin Drive. You're closing off the intersection of Collin Drive and Montecito Way. Uh twenty twenty five dash two is cannabis. That is the retail license for cannabis. Uh twenty twenty five dash three, that's the fees that are associated with the retail license for cannabis. And twenty twenty five dash four, that is a revision to your zoning zoning code uh that relates to cannabis. And just a note for council, um that needs to be considered by the land use board, so we're gonna open it up for public comment and then we're gonna adjourn the public comment, so the land use board still has time to consider it. And then it uh will put it on for the next uh meeting for continued public hearing.
All right, thank you. Alyssa, can we please go into uh second reading, twenty twenty five dash one?
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash one, ordinance of the borough South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, limiting the borough code of the borough South River, so as to mention chapter one maybe three entitled vehicles and traffic.
We have a uh motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Valas, seconded by Council President Seola.
Ballin' Favor?
Aye.
Uh we're gonna go into a public hearing, uh five minutes. State your name and your address for Collin Drive.
That would be me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stella Fitzpatrick. I've been here in South River, my husband and I, till about five years. And I just wanna quickly just name some stuff that's a concern of mine. I'd like a door parked. Not fun for my house. There's a parking area.
This is from Collin Drive. This is all of them.
Oh, considering we can call it.
Collin Drive.
Oh, hey.
There will be, there will be a section you can speak.
Yeah, okay, so as far as Collin Drive, it it needs to be blocked off. Okay, there's no ands, ifs, buts about it. We've got cars going both ways. We have children playing out there, especially in the summertime, okay? It needs to be closed off. Okay, so I can't make that any plainer. You know, we have cars coming out of the driveway. Mine, uh my house is the last house. Okay, so coming out of that driveway, you've got cars coming up. I've got cars coming down. I've got a car making the left. I mean, you know, you know, it doesn't take a rein circuit to pick them out. We need to, we need to close this off. Okay, because someone really, really gets hurt. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Nadia Naluzek and I live at forty two Collin Drive in South River, which is next door to my neighbor Stella Fitzgerald and Chuck Finger, who lives across the street from me. He's been, I know, addressing this problem for about twenty years old. We originally tried to find Fitz Road when the development was being put in and planning board meetings, council meetings. The developer told us he never wanted to put that road in and because of our persistence, they made it it one way in to the new development. I myself have seen people I know who live in the River Road area taking the shortcut to go down Terry, Collin Drive, and down to River Road. And that's the whole thing. We tried to fight it. I asked the mayor at that time, it was Mayor Toto. Mayor Toto resigned shortly after the whole deal was approved. His uncle owned that land. It was a case of I'm outta here. And I said, why do you wanna ruin our neighborhood? You wanna do what people who live there would like you to do. Why not listen to us? We're the ones that are affected by it. But no, and I left it where you could not fight city war. The last interaction I had, where I had to call the police, where I back out of my driveway, a car is coming up, and I wouldn't let the the man act. And I said, you're going up a one-way street. You shouldn't be doing this. He told me to F off. Really. So I didn't let him out, pulled my car back in, went in the house, dialed nine one one, and reported that I was just told to F off for telling somebody you're going out the wrong way. And it is a hazard. I have to look one direction, look the other direction. Fine, if it was two-way street, you do it anyway. But when you think, oh, it's a one-way, you think, you know, no one's gonna be carried out of here, you're dead wrong. You're dead wrong. I stopped and looked twice, not just once, because when they zoom out of that street, they're not doing twenty or twenty-five, they're doing forty. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope this isn't gonna be a case of you can't fight city war.
You know, I'm Robert Fitzpatrick. I live at forty four Collin Drive. Been there about five years, and since we've been there, we have traffic coming up one way street. We gotta, when we pull out our driveway, we gotta look for things. When we cross the street, we gotta look for things. When we cross with our children, our pets, we gotta look, look for things. Those people will come up that street, and they don't care, and they will shoot by. I've almost been hit twice. The deer that try to cross have almost been hit a couple of times. I'm starting to think that, because I've seen police officers park there, but they're not stupid. They see the car right there, they're like, okay. But I'm starting to think that it's gonna take a death of someone before that street is closed, and exactly being sad. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chuck Finger. I live on thirty three Terry Avenue. I'm on the corner of Collin and Terry Avenue, right at the epicenter of this whole mess. I don't know if any of you know about what, I know what this Valas does, 'cause she was back there a couple of minutes years ago.
Yes.
Back in ninety-eight. I moved my house in nineteen ninety. The reason I bought that house is because it was on a dead-end street and the woods were behind it. In nineteen ninety-seven, I get a letter that the property behind me got sold, and they're putting a hundred and forty houses behind me. My neighbors and I all tried to stop it, and we found out that the builders have the right to do anything they want, but the city doesn't have no right at all. We couldn't stop it, but we got the builder to leave five houses out. Because the heaviest section of the woods was behind my house and the four neighbors. So he left five houses out. Everything was said and done. A couple weeks later, I get a letter from the town that they're gonna put the road through. So like, yeah, no, that didn't happen. So we went to all the council meetings, we went to the planning board. Every, mostly everyone was on our side about putting that road through, except Mr. Rattenbach, who's the head of the planning board at the time. And I don't have the letter. I wish I could have found it, but we found a letter from the East Brunswick Democrat Society thanking Mr. Rattenbach into putting that road through. It's whatever we got developed, that their property back there we got developed. So he sponsored people in another town against the wishes of his own town. So we sued the town. We were in court for over a year. It got expensive as hell, of course. And it was, we took about five thousand dollars in lawyers. And what ended up happening was, we were gonna have to go to court again and spend another five thousand dollars. So the builder, because there was a lawsuit against the road, he wasn't allowed to build anything. So the 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 all the property built during the development stopped. There wasn't one house that's built. He was getting mad. He started to sue us because we stopped the development. He said, I talked to the town. If you agree on a one-way street, I'll give you all your attorney fees back and we'll get this done. We did it grudgingly because we got the forty dollar court again. I used to have the five thousand dollars. I was out of work. I hurt my back at the time. We agreed to it. He built the road very last. He did all the houses first, did the road last. The day the road was finished, they put barricades up because it had to be inspected by the state before they can officially open it. The very first day, people were stopping, moving the barricades and driving through there. I finally had to call the Department of Public Works to come up and put something, you know, more sturdy up and talk it up. But the the one, the one-way thing, it's, it never happened. There was people coming out there constantly. I sent a bunch of videos. I'm, for you guys probably saw them. So I put a camera in my house a couple of months back, and I didn't realize that we had the wrong list, and all I saw was these videos. There's, there must be thirty to forty cars a day coming out there. Mayor Zagetti actually, when he was in, he actually helped me. He sent the police out there. They spent forty hours up there, five hours a day for five, for ten days. I said to the officer, what happened? He goes, oh, we only got twenty-five cars going out there. I said, you don't find twenty-five cars moving the wrong way up a wooden street in a forty-hour period, that's a lot. And I've been calling the police. They're very, well, I think all the police know me by name. I've been calling ever about this. Or the speeding that goes on through there, the noise, the, the kids with the, with the custom exhaust on their cars, they're coming down the street. And the end of Collin Drive goes down the speed though. They downshift the cars. All I hear is backfiring all night long. I, I called the police two weeks ago because there was a fight. People coming out there going the wrong way. They got in the cars, and that should start a fight in the middle of the street. And I got a couple dozen of those on my account. There's people fighting in the street. The whole piece has been a disaster. Like I said, I practically bought that house. It was on a dead-end street. It's, you know, I appreciate you looking into this, but it's been, but they told us the traffic city, when I learned they're a traffic expert, and I said, oh, you'll have twenty to thirty cars a day going through here. We have hundreds of cars going through here going right way. Because last stone up on Old Ridge Turnpike, there's a traffic lane. It backs up at night, and everyone takes a shortcut. I believe this will help um have it landing down there too, because I believe more than half the cars coming through to rush hour, people living in East Brunswick on River Road are just taking a shortcut. But the speeding was horrendous, and the noise, like, like the school buses coming out the wrong way. I like call, whoever I see a commercial vehicle, I call a company and give them, give them the license plate number. But this license plate on this is nineteen ninety-eight. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Who's calling? Second call?
Motion to close ballot, second.
Motion by Council President Seola, seconded by Councilwoman Zemian.
Ballin' Favor?
Aye.
All right. On my council discussion? Do we have a motion? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Valas, seconded by Councilwoman DeSantis.
Councilman Valas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Thank you.
So who's gonna get it though? That means who's gonna get it though?
Yes.
It only took twenty years.
Twenty-six, thank you.
Alyssa, in group twenty twenty five dash two?
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash two, an ordinance of the borough South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, limiting chapter one twenty of the borough code of the borough South River entitled cannabis.
Motion waiting for review, President.
President.
Motion by Council President Seala. Motion second by Councilman Ballas, Councilwoman Ballas. Let's open it to public hearing.
I have a question. I have a question. You've got all these questions. Is, is what's on the floor now allowing people to open up a shop to sell cannabis? So we're gonna have teenagers, younger adults, grown folks driving up and down eighteen, whatever other highway they wanna drive, high as cut. Is, is that gonna be it? Yes.
Not at all, actually.
I mean, so how does that work, if please?
I will explain it to you in a few minutes.
Okay. My husband said I'm not allowed to get back up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Father David Garrettson. I reside at one fifty-three Cam Avenue. I'm coming here as a, as a citizen, not as the rector of St. Peter Paul, Whitehead Avenue. I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of this town. I raised my children in this town. And I come with respect and history, and with my neighbor, to speak violently against this. It is one of the most egregious misuses of our rights and our possibilities and our opportunities as citizens of South River. And I just found out about this, actually, this morning, and I congratulate the mayor for having a public conversation about this Friday afternoon, but only three people showed up. So, there you are. So I'm gonna use the handout that was used at that public forum on Friday as an outline. This outline has obviously been drafted not by any of our leadership, our political leadership, but by the industry itself. It is filled with half-truths. It is filled with misrepresentations and blazes and falsehoods. So, we have three different issues, three different resolutions. So I will expand my time over those other five. So, very quickly, using the outline, economic growth. I refer the Borough Council and my fellow citizens to the work of Dr. Nora Volkov, who is the Director of the National Institute of Drug Abuse under the NIH. She was a staunch Republican, and is still in that position, was appointed by President Bush in two thousand and three. Her professional opinion about the legalization and normalization of cannabis dispensary and the industry is the commercial interest contributed to use the drug and addiction. Lessons learned from alcohol. Basically, the argument for this is money. And we all need money. We all want to subsidize the different issues in our town. But you are using a weakness and an addiction issue. So you are basically keeping your taxes low on the backs of your fellow citizens. That's shameful and reprehensible. It may be legal. It may be according to statute, Jersey statute, and Borough statute, but it's morally reprehensible. I also remind everyone that this whole understanding and this work is based on statute. It is still a federal offense. So it's a cash business. I'm not a public safety nor a police nor a criminal expert, but when you have large amounts of cash, it attracts the wrong element. Many of these dispensaries and many of these institutions are used as laundry for people in organized crime. If you go to newjersey.gov.cannabis, you will see the weakness of the CRC. The, in this document, it claims that if you have legal weed, you have inspected weed. That's at best a falsehood. If you go to the state government website about this, that licensed these issues, it's third-party people, and there's no enforcement. There's no, I don't know of any expert that has said that the way this is written presupposes and makes people believe that it's like the USDA-approved weed. That's not what's here. But that's what's being brought in this. Okay, thank you. I got ten more minutes later. It has no medical benefits. It has no... If you look at this, if you look at the CRC document, all of these facilities, and you're talking about twenty-five manufacturing warehousing facilities, only one dispensary, are in towns in economic peril. We don't have this in Coltsburg. We don't have this in East Brunswick. You don't have it in affluent counties, affluent communities. It's in communities like ours that are working class, that have incredibly high drug abuse issues in our schools and in our township. What you were doing is taking the short money for a shameful, disgusting way to abuse your citizens. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say a few words for Father Garrettson. I a hundred percent agree with everything he has said. And if you went and did a survey of regular citizens like myself, working class, they all would say no. Thank you.
Start with your Gucci. One oh four Bridge Turnpike. Cannabis, I have used. I have major back issue. I deal with chronic pain every day in my life. I have used marijuana on and off on my bad days. I am not addicted to it. What it does, it takes the pain away for me instead of taking a Percocet or something that is a death-danger. I was addicted to painkillers back in two thousand and fourteen, after I had major surgery. I got addicted to it. I had to get help. When I have bad pain, I will buy marijuana. You go to this place, it's more tiring for you not. You walk in, you get yourself, you walk out. You cannot stay there, you cannot smoke it on premises. If you try to stay there, you will be arrested. Marijuana is the only thing that has gotten me through all this pain. I'd rather somebody be able to get legal marijuana to help them with different ideas. The fact is, it can help you with depression, anxiety, everything. It's non-addictive. Do I smoke it every day? No. Last time I smoked it was two years ago. So it's non-addictive. It's not like a cigarette. It's not like alcohol. There's been less people killed in car accidents by marijuana than it has been by drug driving. So anyway, I wanted to say, it's addictive and it causes things. It's not true. That's hearsay. It's basically a myth that's been going around for years. It would bring money to this town that it best brings need to help the projects. That's all I have to say.
May I? My name is Stella Fitzpatrick. I live at forty-four Collin Drive, South River. And I am a substance abuse counselor. And I'm here to tell you that, and you probably already know, addiction, okay, a lot of times it starts with a cigarette. Then it starts with the marijuana. Then it can go up. Now, we have, we're talking about marijuana, but we're also talking about fentanyl, which is mixed in with the marijuana. How many kids did we have to lose here? Because you can come out of dispensary, my grandson in Vegas smokes at a dispensary. Actually, he needs to be here. But to, one story short, you can get addicted to anything. Marijuana is no exception. Okay? Yeah, it may make you feel good in your head, because it's all up here. It's all up here. Okay, so let's, let's not, let's not get it mixed up. Okay? Children, and you have so many teenagers now, they're smoking marijuana and mixing it with fentanyl. Some of them, God gives them grace to make it. Okay? And some of them don't. So, yeah, you know, open up a shop. Everybody wants to grow it, you know, everybody wants to make that money. But sometimes you just have to say no. Sometimes you have to look at the longer picture down there. Sometimes you have to go home and look at your children. Because even if they're little, they're gonna be big. And peer pressure is a hell of a thing. So just keep that in mind as you, as you vote on this. There's so many other businesses that could be opened that will bring South River some money. Okay? The marijuana shop cannabis, for the politically correct word, please. Okay? Marijuana, all right? If you've got a choice, and we have a choice in everything we do. So if you have a choice, let, let that choice be a no. Okay? Let that choice be a no. Thank you.
Hi, Sherri, here is one five-three Cam Avenue. Didn't have a chance to look at the handout Friday night, but once I did look at it, I just want to address some things in here that I think are misleading. It's promising if we open this dispensary, there'd be an influx of jobs. I, I don't see that. There's probably gonna be two security guards and two people working in retail. That's, to me, not an influx, okay? As somebody said, have you ever seen one or two people running one of these things? Okay? Support for local businesses. If the town is not attractive, why would people linger after they buy their cannabis products? They're going, and, and a place where you're checked by a security guard and wait in, then you have to exit out the back door, is what it was described to me. Is that the ambiance, is that enhancing the ambiance of South River? Is that something that's gonna make people wanna come here and visit? There was talk about the safety. Well, it's more safe. Mostly, I was told at the meeting, it's mostly people between fifty-five and seventy-five, maybe getting their pain or whatever. They can afford it. The younger ones, as far as reducing crime, the younger ones, I was told, cannot afford it, so they're gonna still be buying off the black market. As far as reduction in crime, yeah, as my husband brought up, there's all this cash in the store. From my understanding, the banks won't take the cash, so the cash is sitting there. Credit card companies are not allowed to be used for that, for that kind of thing. Supposedly, community engagement, they're gonna do educational workshops about it, about the safety of cannabis. Attracting visitors. Why aren't we working on, you know, as far as a unique attraction for tourists, drawing visitors, we're exploring the new cannabis market, why aren't we working on legitimate, healthy attractions? Like, what outline in this report that I dug out of my file? There's some wonderful ideas in here, and not all of them are expensive. Plus, there are grants available to implement things like that. Let's make it into a town people would wanna come to. Apart from the cannabis. All right. The thing that was really... It said, it can help reduce the stigma associated with cannabis use and promote a more aggressive attitude toward the plant. Is that what we want for our young parents and their children? Paving the way for a brighter future for all? I, I just really think that's hyperbole. Check the National Institutes of Health website about the lack of good science on the safety of cannabis use. And then tell me how normalizing, that was another term, the normalization and acceptance of cannabis use within the community. That's true. Is that what we wanna do? Do you wanna normalize it for our children? Is that what we want our children to grow up? How does that create a brighter future for all? Go on Harvard Health. Find out what they say about cannabis. It's not helpful. Beer, much?
Anyone else?
Emily Grasso, thirty-second Street. Yeah, I've been, we've been here thirty-six years, and I agree with what Sherri says about the chilling fact of normalization of marijuana consumption. The message that we're sending about our town, like, our town kind of has an image problem in a lot of people's minds, and I just don't think this would make us, make our image better. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Father David Green. I happen to be the pastor at Corpus Christi Church. I've been in this town for twelve years, so I like to add my voice and support to our concerned citizens about this very important topic. I did have a chance to look at the handout. I'm not sure if the handout that was presented on Friday had any quotes or references. I'm not really sure, because I just had a chance to look at it. But I'm concerned, just as a concerned citizen, what could be possibly the negative unintended consequences of embracing something like this for our community, and of course, for our people who live here, and for our town, our reputation? The handout, of course, speaks very positively, but I think obviously, there is a place for playing the devil's advocate, so to speak, just in terms of balancing out the idea and trying to weigh the pros and cons of it. And I guess, I hope that you deliberate that, obviously, for the best interest of our town and for our future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Joe, the not-on- thirty-Daley Street here in South River. I personally don't have an opinion about one way or the other, but I can say this without hesitation. It was on the ballot. The people of this town said no. So arguing all these valid points is useless if you do what the people have asked you to. If you wanted to sell it, people would say yes. If you wanted to sell the idea of having cannabis in South River. But the fact is, they voted no. So people here are reflecting that vote. And so I would encourage the council to take that very, very much in mind. There's things you may wanna do. There may be things that this town needs, but sometimes you just have to say no and find another way. So I hope you take that into consideration before you vote for this tonight. That'd be very much appreciated.
Hello. Hi, my name is Evan Curtis. I live at sixty-four Whitehead Avenue. I'm actually right next to the church. They're still gonna be, continue to be beat by snipers. We have a slight difference in opinions, but I did hear a couple of things. What I heard tonight was, not in our community. But do you know that they can deliver here and people are buying it and bringing it back home? So it isn't your community. You're just not benefiting or the town's not benefiting from the taxes. Another thing I heard was banks don't allow it. That's false. Credit unions and local banks are allowing it. You are correct. Federal bank, but black banks do not allow it. They are also trying to get in the business because they are trying to snap up all the small companies that have become multi-billion dollar companies. They're trying to buy those companies because they've kind of entered the market. Um what I also heard was we don't want it in our community, but yet sixty-seven percent of people in New Jersey voted for it. Also, it depends on demographics, right? If you look at who buys it, yes, there are older people that buy it. But the most important thing, which I did not hear today, is just because you're not, people are still continuing to buy it, but you're not offering a safe way to get it. So because you may not like it, it's still going to exist. Now, would you rather have someone in your family get something that is tested and regulated by New Jersey State or something that could be laced with fentanyl, which I heard a drug counselor said? Which was also interesting. Marijuana is not a gateway drug. So you um and like that was said, you can get addicted to anything. You can get addicted to food. So if we kind of go with that theory, we would outlaw McDonald's, we would outlaw we would outlaw supermarkets, right? Because they all you can use all these things. So again, I would say from my perspective, if it's done in a controlled manner, um it would be a good thing for the town. Thank you.
Anyone else? First call.
Second call.
Motion to close.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Bowles.
Ballot favor?
Alright.
Alright, council discussion?
I would like to speak on this. Um I understand both sides here as people come up and they're passionate about how they feel. Um I also understand some of the hesitation about it being in our borough or our town. Uh I do know that while we were sitting here, I just typed the word dispensary in my phone on maps and hmm there's several within ten miles, probably twenty or thirty of them. I think we have to understand that this is something that's here to stay. I'm myself, Councilman Zemian, Councilman Sealer on the Budget Committee. We're closely with Josanga. Every year, the borough is faced with more challenges and more obstacles and for lack of a better word, more problems financially. We have to become creative on solutions. New problems need new solutions. To give you some context and numbers, I'll use a hundred thousand dollars of revenue as a basis point. The average tax bill for property tax in our town is seventy-five hundred dollars. From a municipal portion of that, we get twenty-nine and a half percent, which is twenty twenty-two hundred dollars for round numbers. That means you'd have to build forty-five homes at that evaluation in town to generate one hundred thousand dollars of revenue to our budget. If you were to build a Heritage Hills type style house, one of those homes, you'd need twenty-six of those to make the same budget with what their property taxes are. There's no place in this town to expand in that direction. I can tell you personally, I don't partake in this. I have friends who do. Most of them are responsible. They have families. They pay their bills. I don't want to say it's not my business what they do in their spare time, but these are good people. The misnomer than anyone who does this is is not is just not true. Do people get off the wrong path? They absolutely do. But I do think that as a borough, we need to address the fact that this is something that can generate a big amount of revenue that can impact our budget. And it's not just about money. That was brought up by one of the one of the community members about being about money. That is part of this is in your town one way or another. These are not little shops where people can go and you have to be twenty-one to enter. You can't even go in the door. It isn't like a Lala or a convenience store. You have to be twenty-one to enter. When you go in, it's regulated how much you can buy for obviously, you know, for reasons of distribution. So this is here to stay. If we do not get in at some point and put this into our town as an opportunity to generate this revenue, eventually, telling English Town has four dispensaries. English Town. English Town is literally two traffic lights. You go right or left in English Town, you're in and out when I'm around before you even blink. This is this is in these small towns. It's not just in cities. It's not just in urban areas. So I can tell you I voted against this in twenty twenty-three when it was on the referendum. But in the last, we'll call it fourteen fifteen months, being on council and understanding some of the challenges, I have a different view of this. A lot again of my friends and and people that I know and how they utilize the product. So I'm not going to try to change anyone's opinion here because I know there are some strong feelings, but I will say that this is something that we is here. So we have two choices tonight. We can say yes or no. But as a borough, this is important for us to move forward and I just think that we need to all understand. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, no, I don't. Um I respect, you know, honor whatever's any has to say, but when it was mentioned that this is not medicinal. Personally, I know people that suffered horribly from cancer. This got them through a lot longer than they should have. I know neighbors that, again, horribly suffered from Parkinson's. Got him so much farther along than he was supposed to. That his family, my family, got to spend more time with him. So I don't want to hear that it's not medicinal. It does help. It helps with anxiety. It helps with stress. I personally do not partake in that. But have any of you ever been to one of these dispensaries that you can say that people are going to hang out? You get, this is more secure than most jewelry diamond districts. And just because if we approve this, it's doesn't, it stops, not doesn't stop here. The state has to come in and approve it also. We just tell them that if we want to go along, the the stringency of the rules of these are, I never knew, amazing, totally amazing. But again, it's something I think the town, it's not going to be advertised with bells and whistles and it's not the drug of the seventies when I was in high school that you went down the hill by the high school, not me, but it's safer, it's more contained. And I just personally, um I know we're never all going to agree on it, but I just wanted to say my points. That's it.
Anyone else? Listen.
Councilman Gertenski?
Want my vote?
Yeah.
Oh, we may make a motion to approve or adopt. Word needs to number twenty twenty-five dash two.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Bowles.
Councilman Gertenski?
Upstate.
Councilwoman Bowles?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Uh no. Listen, twenty twenty-five dash three.
Twenty twenty-five dash three, ordinance of the borough of South River, County Middlesex, state of New Jersey. Amendment to Borough Code, the Borough of South River, espous to amendment chapter one fifty-five entitled fees.
Motion to wait for reading.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Bowles.
Ballot favor?
Aye.
Calmer here. Promotion, uh this is for is uh this is ordered against twenty-five zero three or?
Yes.
Um uh say your name and address. Sure, it's Evan Curtis, uh sixty-four Whitehead Avenue. Um I just have a question. I want to know a little bit more about this two, the building application fee. What is that for? Uh exactly, when will the application be filed or what's the title of this application?
So do you want individually, so the suitability, the suitability application fee is you have to come and there is an application already already formed. It's at Borough Hall. You come and fill it out. And then the way the process works is we have to review what whatever location that you are um proposing to put it. If it falls within the locations in which the license is permitted and this is for any of the licenses, not just the retail license. Um if it falls within that, then you pursue it to the application. You ask the uh Borough Council for a reservation of your support. And that's what gets forwarded to the state so you can get a license at the state.
Okay.
But but there is a uh if you're interested, there is a application and there is a full uh instructions that come with it, like a handout that the borough has that that can give to you so you can follow down what what you the statute has to take.
I don't know if you still uh if you have to pick it up in person.
Uh I don't know if you have to pick it up in person. Um we could pro- we could probably email it. Um I I don't see why, but I I do know it's at the borough. So Alyssa has it. Um so I'm sure she could email it to you if that's something that you want to.
Okay. That was a very much.
Anyone else?
So specifically to uh dash zero three. Uh I want to correct some ad hominem arguments that were given towards me. Uh the fact that marijuana is addictive is not an opinion, an opinion nor a feeling. It is a finding of the National Institution of Health. And as a parish priest and a certified addiction counselor, I can say that I know many people in that block, many people through twelve step programs that are addicted to cannabis, first. Second, I've also dealt with many parishioners that have cancer. Including my father, a blessed memory, and my mother, where medical marijuana was used. That's not what we're talking about. And again, since we are talking specifically on dash zero three, I will uh simply restate, it is scandalous and shameful to fund our township through addictions and issues that will bring shame and pain to our families. Thank you. Can I reclaim one minute, please? Send to my, I want to be very clear that my brother and my neighbor Edwin is an honorable man and a person of integrity. This is not about personality.
Of course.
But it's still shameful. You're so good.
Anyone else? Second call.
Motion to close.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman DeSantis.
Ballot favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? Do we have a motion?
No.
Motion to vote.
Not voting.
Motion to adopt.
Go adoption. Motion by Councilwoman DeSantis.
Second.
Second by Council President Seola.
Councilwoman Bowles?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Upstate.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Listen, twenty twenty-five dash four, and council, you want not to vote on this. This will be moved to the menus after public hearing.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four, ordinance of the borough of South River, County Middlesex, state of New Jersey. Amendment chapter three fifty of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled zoning.
Big motion waiting for reading.
Next.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Bowles.
Ballot favor?
Aye.
We don't know up to the public?
Uh as you just told, this uh this is for twenty-five zero four. Yeah, so I uh my name is Evan Curtis, sixty-four Whitehead Avenue. I have a question on section C for licensure. Um I just wanted to confirm that you said licensure, I was assuming you're saying conditional license. Because there's one thing that's been, um there's no letter of support standing up by uh Socrates right now for annualized license. I might pull it down, but it didn't all licenses, just wanted to.
I believe that's currently in our uh current regulations. That wasn't changed from uh so technically you have recent uh frequent T dash eight subsection T licensed cannabis facilities and I think that was just carried forward. There was, that wasn't a change, but and and what is, I'm sorry, what is your question?
Um yeah, so um per the, yeah, per the NJCRC, there's only two possible licenses. There's a conditional and an annual. So I wanted to confirm that that language was around the conditional. Hasn't been enhanced of uh support letter issued for annual license?
Give me one second. Yes, I I'm understanding your your question correctly, yes.
Okay, good.
Um if you want to talk more offline about this too, we can do that.
Okay. And then my other question was section D application, pre-letter set for developer application. Just wanted to confirm that is who you usually will develop and they're asked only if there is near demand and they're designing to build something from the ground up?
No. Uh duh 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 duh. No, I I I don't believe that that's that's what that is intended. I believe it, I believe it means uh development of the facility.
Yeah, because the only question I have was uh I think I said something about zoning, like if you had a building that's already built, you basically can't change or anything. It's yeah, yeah, it's already built. So inside, yes, plan, you know.
Inside, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Um yeah, so so these are definitely issues that we can, if you want, we can go through more off. But yes, I believe that that developer doesn't mean you're just building a building from scratch. That's not, that's not what that entails.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, Father David Garrett, one five three cam, want to address another ad hominem. I've been in many cannabis uh dispensaries throughout the country. You remember? I used to be the roadman for the labor for Guns N' Roses, for Beyonce. Been around this stuff. And the fact that here in dash oh four, you're addressing and isolating these facilities that you've just approved into tertiary areas of our borough is is an admission of the issue that we've all been talking about. That these are not desirable companies. These are not desirable. If you would leave them as desirable, you wouldn't let them build anywhere. But at your own statute, your own ordinance acknowledges the safety and the image problems that you've just brought on the borough. You've admitted your own culpability in bringing this on on the borough of South River. Thank you.
I'd like to just be respectful of you. Um it's kind of hard for me to understand exactly what happened here. But was this cannabis slash marijuana thing approved? Did every one of you approve it? Or was there one that said no?
Two that said no.
Just
One no and one abstain.
It's just one abstain.
Who who were the noes?
I believe at the end of
A no and an abstain.
One no and did you vote yes, mayor?
I'm against it.
He hasn't got a vote.
So we have only one no and the rest of you all voted?
Abstain.
Abstain.
When I'm asked how the vote went. Another thing, how much money are we talking about here? Is this going to slash my real estate tax? Five hundred dollars a year? How much money is South River going to make? Are you going to make fifty thousand a year, a hundred thousand? How much are you making? I didn't hear anything about how much money is involved.
It's an algorithm based on the retail sales, so the borough gets a percentage of the sales, so impossible to exactly quantify. But there's estimates are well north of a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars annually.
Annually, and and what is the percentage for South River?
That is a percentage recital.
So they would have to make what? A million dollars for you to get to a hundred thousand?
Basically, if it's at two percent, every million they sell would be twenty thousand dollars into the pocket of the tenants.
Was there any kind of a study done in? So was there any kind of a study done to, you mentioned English Town? What with the two marijuana joints? That they have, how much money are they making? You've done a study, obviously.
Two point five million dollars.
Or maybe?
Two point five million dollars.
That they get in one year.
That's what they get.
How much of that goes to the ripoff artist in Trenton?
Two point five. I don't know what the ripoff artist.
There's gotta be a cop for them in Trenton.
That's your question.
The two point five million is the, is the, that's what the town got from their sales. I'm sure there's other percentages, but that's what the town would get in that instance.
Scott free, no strings attached, no train pulling in there.
Right, that goes to the town.
That's what the town is gonna get.
That's what it's gonna get.
And where is this establishment gonna be located?
We don't know yet.
Right next to the police station?
Nope.
That would be a good spot.
So if you're.
Oh, how about uh, how how about next to uh, the church, one of the churches?
Yeah.
Can't do it there either.
Can't do it.
Can't do it there either, wow.
Yeah.
So where is this gonna go?
On Collins Drive.
Yeah.
That would be. Okay, you have a little skin in the spine. Lightning would you try?
Yes.
I think you made a mistake. That's um, I mean, by the time it's all over, you're not gonna be gaining anything except for the drug addicts coming in to buy the stuff. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing that.
Thank you. My wish. Let's write between your house and mine.
This is.
Right between our houses.
No, 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 no.
Only you, okay. Now, if I wanted to come in on the other side of this as far as um, the cannabis shops and open up.
From the Belarusian church.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is there certain areas of South River that are zoned?
Not for recoveries.
Not for recoveries. Okay, beautiful.
Chair Garrett's one by three cam avenue. I just wanted to point out that the English Town has five dispensaries.
That's correct.
Oh.
Yeah, that's not coming from one dispensary, that's from five, so.
That's what we were talking about.
Okay, alright, and they're all within a two block area, you can imagine. Come on, that's why. And they were, he was very pleased that it attracted the business of a cigar lounge and tattoo parlour. So, you get what you get.
Yes, it's me, it's Alvin Arucia, one oh four, over from back. Has anybody here actually visited one of these places?
I have. Mike Manson works in a dispensary.
In Las Vegas.
In Las Vegas.
Different store, I knew exactly what happened there.
Yeah, nothing happened.
No, they were tainted stuff there at once.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, here's the whole thing, I'm gonna make it real simple. It's not just marijuana, it's oil that you use for paint, which is what I use. I have a hundred.
Why didn't you get it from a doctor? My neighbor told me.
That's where I got it.
He's got, he's got MS, he gets it from his doctor.
That's.
That's addressed in the church.
Might I address? I had my medical license, my, I had to get it because of how bad my pain was. It's not, it's not what you think of in movie, oh, you know, smoking a drink, it's not even that, it's oil that helps your back. It's you can smoke it, there's edible you can take, and it will basically, people say it doesn't work for pain. It does work for pain. Because I would like anybody in here, I wouldn't want anybody in here tonight to walk the day of my life, how bad my back is. And I'm probably going for another surgery because how bad my back is. So it's the only thing that's broken. And I'm not a dickie. Just, that's my piece, thank you.
Anyone else? First call, second call.
Close well with me.
Motion by council president, Seola seconded by uh, councilwoman DeSantis.
Ballon de favor.
Uh, council discussion. Alright, we'll continue to the next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that, can can I get a motion to carry to the next meeting?
Motion to carry it to the February twenty fourth meeting.
Say.
For a public hearing.
Motion by council president Seola, seconded by councilwoman Dallas.
Councilwoman Dallas? Councilwoman Santas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dzimian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council president Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, we're going to first reading twenty twenty five dash five.
Orders twenty twenty five dash five, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for calendar year twenty twenty five.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash five on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law for the second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on February the twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five by video conference via Zoom written in council chambers in the criminal justice building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by council president Seola, seconded by councilwoman Gertensky.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Santas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dzimian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council president Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa twenty twenty five dash six.
Orders twenty twenty five dash six, ordinance authorizing various federal housing and community development grant improvements and to then locate, locate it in the borough of South River and the county of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash six on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law for the second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on February the twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five by video conference via Zoom written in council chambers in the criminal justice building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by council president Seola, seconded by councilwoman Gertensky.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Santas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dzimian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council president Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa twenty twenty five dash seven.
Orders twenty twenty five dash seven, ordinance of the borough of South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, adopting the amendment to sub area one fifty two of the lower Main Street redevelopment plan.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash seven on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law for the second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on February the twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five by video conference via Zoom written in council chambers in the criminal justice building, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Excellent.
Motion by council president Seola, seconded by councilwoman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Santas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dzimian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council president Seola?
Yes.
Your honor, your reports, Bruce. Thank you everybody, good evening. Uh, the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four road programs are on hold because of the weather. Once things warm up, they will continue. At the present time, weather devados, and no complete. Twenty twenty three local transportation projects grant, that is under design. Twenty twenty five local aid program, we submitted a proposal for that. The substation, uh, testing and maintenance is completed. Uh, we processed the second progress payment for them. And once they get us all the reports and we review them to see if everything's in order, then that can be closed out. And the D P Strummer assistance grant, we issued a letter. We have previously issued a very comprehensive letter, we've issued another one outlining what to do this year and the estimated cost to provide those services.
Thank you, Bruce, anything for Bruce, counsel?
Joe? A couple of resolutions on the agenda. We have a resolution to purchase a police vehicle under a COA. Resolution rejecting the bids, the utility building and collection services due to a discrepancy in the bid. And the final one is a resolution to purchase and install a turf field, uh, the infill part of Caskey Field. Uh, it's also done under a COA.
Thank you, anything for uh, Joe? Paige?
Yes, the borough calendars have come in. They can be picked up at forty eight Washington Street, fifty five Reed, the library, and the D P W office. And also Monday, February seventeenth will be closed, no yardways can be picked up.
Thank you, Paige. Uh, counsel, anything for Paige? Police chief?
I don't have anything left.
Fire chief?
Good evening, mayor and council. Fire department has responded to forty alarms for January. Must go on record and personally thank all of our mutual aid partners in the county that assisted with our multiple structure fires for the last month. Department recertified firefighters and members of our ladies auxiliary CPR for the first aid administered by the Middlesex County Fire Academy. We will schedule another CPR first aid recertification class for this quarter for members who could not be present. Department also held our annual hazmat bloodborne passage to the right to know and S C V education proficiency program. Engine two was placed out of service today, it's currently at Campbell Supply. Monthly fire convention tip, never run portable generators inside your home or your garage. And please consider adopting a fire hydrant when it snows. Requesting that if a fire hydrant is on your property, please consider cleaning all snow around the fire hydrant so it can make quick and easy access for our department. And once again, we are one hundred percent volunteer organization, so any member of our crew you would like to come out and volunteer, consider joining our association, please, feel free.
Thank you for your service.
Yes. Anything for fire chief? Alyssa?
Nothing tonight.
And you?
I have nothing tonight, mayor.
Warren?
Mayor, just a couple of things, I can uh tell everyone that our water bank project now has a number at the I Bank and we are moving forward and that the engineering firm is doing their environmental inspections so that they can forward that to the E P. And just a couple, resolution number seventy three, that's authorizing a shared service agreement with East Brunswick for various services. At time, we both work reciprocal with our water, sewer, and road departments and this gives us the uh agreement to do that. And seventy four is our twenty twenty five public health services. We we have an agreement with the county to provide a health officer for the borough, that's all I have.
Anything for Warren, counsel? Councilwoman Gertensky?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, first off, I'd like to comment on the Office on Aging. Um, they will be closed on the seventeenth or uh they'll be closed on the seventeenth, most of the borough offices are closed. There worries also National Heart movement. And wearing red is significant to say that you're trying to take care of yourself. Uh, there is a publication that the Office on Aging has online that gives you specifics from the American Heart Association. Personally, I know, last week. And uh, there's a few other things. Remember database, they have to upgrade it, uh, so if you have been a member of the Office of Aging prior to January twenty twenty five, please stop by and update your information so they can uh keep their register open. Our D P W mentioned that our calendars are available and the tax preparation program. Uh, they do not offer it in town here, you have to call for an appointment uh with A A R P. They're available at East Brunswick Public Library, their phone number is seven three two three nine zero six seven six seven. The North Brunswick Senior Center, their phone number is seven three two four one eight two 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 two. And the Old Bridge Public Library, and their phone number is seven three two seven oh five one one eight six. Or you can email them also. And I know it is at Spotswood Office, uh, which area code seven one, yeah, seven three two two one five three four three two. And that's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, counsel woman Dallas.
Uh, yeah, in risk, uh, the um, tax service, A R P. The one of East Brunswick only does on Mondays and Wednesdays. I made my appointment. The only, so the, I think the last week in March, I want, maybe the first Monday in April, but that's the only two days they do it. They're very good, I've been known there for years after South River, after we had COVID and we couldn't do it anymore. But only Monday and Wednesday, the other libraries, I don't know. Um, the Word of Health will be sponsoring their rabies clinic on Saturday, March twenty ninth, down at the D P W. And I'll give you the time when it gets closer, they have to see when the uh, the vet will be there. And in addition to that, any late fees for your pets for licenses are waived until April first, so you don't have to rush out if you haven't got your pets uh with their rabies. And just to continue to look at the library site for their upcoming events, I know my post on Facebook myself. Little kids, middle aged, you know, teenagers, adults, yoga, they have so much stuff to do there. Look into it, just go to the South River Library website. And just to say, whoever posted on tonight's Facebook, we are not building any new apartments on Willard Avenue by the substation. I guess you're doing work there?
Yeah.
So somebody wants to know if we're building more apartments and that, so please just stop. This is how you start trouble, this is how you start rumors. So there's no apartments going on Willard Avenue. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor, please uh, email.
Um, our butcher company is currently trimming tree branches away from power lines to keep ahead of them interfering with transmission of power and helping prevent power issues, that's all I have, anything?
Thank you, councilwoman DeSantis.
Uh, recreation advisory board update, uh, registration for sports in the spring season is now open. T-ball is fundamental instructional program mixed for boys and girls ages four through six and will start in mid-April. Softball for girls ages six through thirteen with teams competing eight U, ten U, and thirteen U. Baseball for boys ages seven through ten with teams competing at eight U and ten U levels. Flag football is mixed for boys and girls ages five through eighteen. Behavior will be determined once the enrollment numbers are finalized.
That's true.
Softball, baseball, and flag football will all begin with March. Zumba classes begin tomorrow night, Tuesday, February fourth. Classes are Tuesdays and Thursdays from six to seven P M and you can still register even though it starts tomorrow. To register for all, you go to W W W dot South River N J dot org, click Departments, then Parks and Recreation, and you will see a link to enroll. And if any issues online, you can call the office at seven three two two five four 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 one two. Speaking with Parks and Recreation director Terry Chandler, we are still looking for a tennis instructor for the spring season. If anyone is interested, they can email terry at tchandler at South River N J dot org or call the same office. The next recreation advisory board meeting will be coming Monday, February tenth at seven P M at fifty five Reed Street, residents are welcome and encouraged to attend. And the rep office will be closed this Friday, February seventh. Uh, they will be at a cheer event, the Reach the Beach Nationals in Ocean City, Maryland. Uh, it has northeast, the Northeast Regional Team, so they will be down there with the girls, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Gertensky?
Here's your copy.
Thank you, mayor. Um, the only thing I have is the departmental uh commission is planning a uh Arbor Day event. That's gonna be April twenty sixth, um, we're still working on the details to have the community come out all get together and uh try to do a fire down, you can clean, and that's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, I will hold my comments, I'd like to open it to the public, five minutes. State your name and address.
Okay. Chair Garrett's one by three cam avenue, I just wanted to check in something. Am I wrong, or wasn't there a referendum about synthetic turf? Or maybe that was just a bunch of shame, wasn't that voted down?
Down like.
Four events.
That's four events, so that's not quite the point.
For that, uh, so I just wanna say a couple things about synthetic turf, alright? Um.
I mean, let me play.
It has negative impacts on the environment because of microplastic pollution. It creates heat items, it's hotter for the people playing. There's chemicals released, and as far as health, there's exposure of chemicals, endocrine disruption, and cancer risk. Alright, I think it's very telling that the NFL Players Association is calling on the NFL to ban artificial turf in favor of natural grass because it's unsafe for players. Um, it can also add to more ankle injuries, alright? It's not necessarily cheaper, um, you look up online, it, I'm seeing things between seventy five hundred dollars and twenty three, well, thirty nine thousand for a field of upkeep for years, okay? You have to clean it, you have to use weed killer because some of the weeds come up through the turf. And there's pet clean, there's, you know, animals wander onto it and do their business, you have to clean that too. Um, it might last eight years, companies say, oh, fifty to twenty years, but the critics say eight years is not unusual. Um, it just depends who you talk to. Uh, the study, a study by the National Institutes of Health said it, uh, artificial turf contains semi-volatile organic compounds and heavy metals that pose a potential risk to the ecosystem and human health. And again, the higher temperature. Um, residents fighting against it in New Jersey are in. Residents fighting against it in New Jersey are in Stock Plains, Maplewood, Princeton, Westfield, and Ridgeway. So I would not like to see this kind of swept in and just voted, you know, per form of law. I think we really need to think about this. It's a big investment. It's going to be a big investment of maintenance and it's not good for the kids. Okay?
Couple more items, please. Benjamin, I'm sure you will want to hear from me.
I would like to ask you, why do you have fireworks in August when it's for July fourth?
One, it's cheaper. Two, you're not competing with everybody that's actually having a conference July, which I agree with you.
July fourth?
I agree with you.
I'm from the old school. July fourth is a dependent state.
I agree.
Do I have to go to East Brunswick to see July fourth fireworks? And the good news is with our marijuana money flow, you'll have the money to do July four. Please, I would be so grateful. The rain of monies coming down the house. At July fourth on July fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I answer that? Just that, this is why it started at the end of the summer. When I was on, when I was out, when I was on the Red Commission, we purchased, fireworks aren't cheap. They're what? I don't know how much they are now. We got rain. The rainy day got rain. The next week got rain. So the fire, the fireworks company wouldn't do it. So we figured we had to pay the money anyway. So we made it for an end of summer. It actually drew more people because other towns are coming to our town for that. The vendors did much better. And I don't know if they still do it. They used to test new stuff for us that we never had to pay for. So if they thought it was something good, the next year they could go charge another temp. But they would test out some of the fireworks for us that was included in the one price. That's how it started. We just couldn't get rid of the rain in July that year.
When it was on July fourth and I would go to Denny Field, I could be able to find a seat.
Well, now you, now there's less seats, so. But I just wanted to know why it started that way.
I remember when it was, when this fight, oh, why wasn't fireworks on July fourth?
There was only on July fourth, like a second or whatever. It's always two days before.
Okay, Stella Fitzpatrick, forty four County Drive on the Ridge Shore and Sweet. And if you hear a foreign noise, it's because my stomach is growling because I have a beef. Okay, so please, just ignore that. I, and we can talk about anything?
Yep.
Anything's on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, for me, the first thing is having a dog park. Right off of Leninde, Len, uh.
Lenardine.
Lenardine. There's a huge park space over there. They have a couple of things for the kids, but for the most part, there's nothing over there for us. So there's enough space to put a little doggy area. And we have quite a few people that walk their dogs. So that's the first thing. Second thing is, I'm from New York originally. Why is it so dark out here? It is dark. Now, for those that have been here all your life and twenty, thirty years, it may not appear that way to you because your eyes have adjusted, got your eye. But it is dark out here. I was looking to take a jog from three to eleven P M. I did a drive run today in Kirk Ambly. And daytime is fine. Nighttime, I'm going to be in trouble. I'm going to be in trouble because it is just absolutely dark out here in Jersey.
I don't think they do much.
I mean, kids, you know, obviously I have pretty much some ones. We have, they put a new halogens on some of the streets. They're very bright.
Very bright.
But the ones that, the ones that I'm looking at, they're not, that's bright. They're not white. They're, they're like a soft living room color. And the only thing that's bright on the road where, um.
The bridge lights you're talking about?
Old Bridge, Old Bridge Road.
Oh, Old Bridge, that's county.
Old Bridge, that's county. Has nothing to do with us.
That's not a dog?
No. But you can tell it's not even.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because the, the, the lighting is like a soft living room lighting. And that, and, um, the only bright lights are the ones coming off the cars. And those are gone. They can be blinding.
Yeah.
You know, they can be blinding. Um, okay. Small business loans. Are there funds for that?
The E D C, they meet once a month. Um, they're going to be having another, uh, business get together early spring. And there was, they had something for the holiday in December where all the businesses came. There was a lady from the state there with small, low interest business loans and grants.
Wow.
That our grant writer Dawn found at the, um, leading municipalities and she came up and she explained different things to the small businesses and they were very happy. So there's going to be another one coming up. It'll be advertised on the website. And it's up where, I'm not sure where they're going to have it this time.
That's South River?
South River Economic Development for, uh, committee.
But, and the website is South River?
South River, yeah, South River, New Jersey. And kind of South River N J, that's our word.
Okay, okay. And, um, last but not least, and this may not be untold by my name, but this is not your area either. Um, stoplight on Arthur Avenue?
Arthur Street.
Arthur Street?
Arthur Street, no, it's County Road. I'm not exposed to kids.
All right. Thank you so much. I have enjoyed this. I mean, it's, I'm loving it. I really got a lot of test experience, especially in a youth day. I am just so delighted. Thank you.
I have some, please, I have some to add.
The question is, um, for really good worth of education. But maybe you can tell me why she spoke to them. But I am having deja vu all over again. I remember voting no on that building that was put up on the corner by the high school.
That's port of that.
I, I voted no. My neighbor voted no. We all thought we voted no. And we see this building. How did that happen?
You have to answer.
The board of events has to answer me. Well, I'll have to go and see them.
You ready?
I mean, I voted no.
Wasn't it? Anybody else?
Why did that king get killed?
Just can't take it.
Good night.
Good night.
Nice to see you.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have, um, I'm only rest of what you guys heard. I guess.
Good night, everyone.
Um, thank you for, um, announcing on Arbor Day, Mary. So I do have questions. So I don't have Richard's expertise to draw from, but, um, so if we're going to have events that daily comes, right? What safety measures do we need to have in place for that day?
What do you mean by safety?
Like, do we need, you know, if the public is going to come?
Oh, okay. So who's, Rich, Rich is probably going to put in a request with us so we can speak to them. Let them know that there's no large amount of people. Hopefully, but they'll probably have a couple of sales out there for us.
Okay, so I don't know how long, when has this been? Uh, April twenty sixth. So we've got lots of time.
Send me an email so we can try to get this thing arranged for you as soon as possible?
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? First of all?
Motion.
Yeah, because when you added it.
It gotta be quicker. You gotta be quick.
Uh, first off, the Main Street project the county is doing is just like your project. It's not going to happen until maybe spring. They're still doing the revisions that the state wants. So, uh, that's the, for the railroad tracks and that type of stuff. So I just want to just let you know. So I'm not going to mention it until I know something's actually going to happen. The, uh, and I don't know if it's appropriate time to speak about it. I know for, uh, the new ordinance that I guess we can talk about next meeting, which is the, uh, Lower Main Street redevelopment. Just wanted to mention that the typo error in the, uh, in there, what I know is not, doesn't include a lot, um, doesn't include a lot fifteen.
Okay, we'll double check that.
I don't know if it means anything, but I happen to notice this very much. And then we'll talk about that later. Um, other than that, I just want to point out that, um, I seen, and I don't know why this is, to be getting double billed for electricity. Can you believe that?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know how many other people. I've been picking it up, making out one check. Where they want to ask, putting them both together and sending to the town, which I'm going to do again.
I got it.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah.
Is it the same company that we were having problems with? Or did we get finally get somebody new? Because this is not, this is not.
Same company, different printer. Yeah, same company, different printer.
Okay, that works. I, I'll, I'll give an eye on it because it's, it's happened before. And I just, I had something I must have to own. But, um, so I'm going to, I'm going to continue doing the same thing. Just send it in with my, my correct payment and then wait this, wait this. I just want to make sure that. Yeah, that's what I plan on doing. Yeah, I forgot to pay my taxes. It took today. But you guys can come take my house. Uh, but, um, yeah. That's really, believe it or not, that's it. I got it set.
Good, good.
And, and see you soon.
Anyone else? First call? Second call?
Motion, close bubble, second.
Motion by Council President, uh, zero, second by Councilwoman Mary Zinnian.
All in favor?
All right.
Uh, we have one memorial appointment, which is, uh, Brian Alita being put onto the land use board as ultimate number two. Alyssa, we're going to go through consent resolutions.
Whereas Resolution twenty twenty five oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to put down various recent issues of routine and non-controversial nature at one time. So therefore, being as hereby resolved as the lowest of resolutions adopted by the Borough Council Hall as at the same or individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions twenty twenty five sixty nine to twenty twenty five eighty four. Sixty nine, authorizing transfer between the twenty twenty four budget. Seventy, authorizing purchase of a police vehicle. Seventy one, authorizing the purchase and installation of a synthetic field for Kowalski Park. Seventy two, resolution authorizing Sergeant John Kenny to serve as acting lieutenant. Seventy three, authorizing a shared services agreement with East Brunswick for various services. Seventy four, authorize twenty twenty five public health services and Joel agreement. Seventy five, authorizing a person-to-person transfer application of coronary retail consumption license. Seventy six, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with twenty five Main Street LLC. Seventy seven, authorizing Title Thirty Nine Motor Vehicle Enforcement. Seventy eight, approving submission of a grant application to the N J Department of Environmental Protection. Seventy nine, appointment of Brian Heistop to Sergeant in the South River Police Department. Eighty, rejecting bids for utility billing services. Eighty one, accept December ninth, twenty twenty four regular minutes. Eighty two, accept January first, twenty twenty five reorganization minutes. Eighty three, accept January thirteenth, twenty twenty five regular and executive session minutes. The four, authorize a building clean force.
Third is your motion? Motion by Councilwoman Valas, second, second by Councilman Krasinski.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Santos?
Yes, with the exception for opposing claims obtained from twenty five dash zero zero one five eight and twenty five dash zero zero two six three.
Councilwoman Zinnian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jan Kopolis?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes.
What's the urgency you want?
Yes.
Well, we have nothing for new business. We're hoping to help to governing, uh, comments. Uh, we must have with, uh, Councilwoman Jan Kopolis. Um, I just, uh, Mary, all I have is I'd like to say thank you to our first responders and especially to our fire department for, you know, all the work they do. And I heard forty some calls in June. Great job, guys. That's it, that's it. Councilman Santos?
Uh, I would just like to echo with Councilman Jan Kopolis about the structure fire. Uh, seeing the pictures and videos, it was serious and, uh, no one was harmed, which is most important. So thank you guys for, for all of that. So we appreciate it.
Councilman Zinnian?
Yeah, echoing the same thing. Um, big shout out to the fire department and all the surrounding fire departments that responded and, you know, that's, there was quite a few, if I'm understanding. So. And F R also, because I get the messages the next morning, I mean, even today, they responded back there. So, um, good job to them. That's it.
Councilwoman Valas?
Oh, um, well, the fire, and of course, you do a wonderful job. Uh, I, I wish you safety every time you go out. I'm going to get in my little soapbox again about parking by the schools because your driveway, my driveway is not your parking lot. My neighbor's driveway is not your parking lot. The other day, if God forbid, there had been any kind of emergency on Johnson Place, none of them would have come in. Again, I don't know why you can't tell that the yellow is not the place to park. My eighteen combs by my house and my neighbors is ridiculous. Lesson number, whatever you got your driver's license back in the day, yellow, no parking. Driveway is no parking. Insulin's driveway, no parking. Yeah, fire hydrants, no parking. It's not happening just by me. Thomas Street, again, you could not get a fire from up that street the other day. And, and you have to pay attention. Please, one of these kids someday is going to dart out in front of wherever. Something's going to happen. And guess who's they're going to blame? They're not going to blame each other for parking where they don't belong. They're going to blame the firemen and the policemen and the town and whoever else. On the same note, curb your dogs, please, especially by the school. I guess the same curb, they're parking the yellow, just walk their dogs on the hill. Because they can't read the signs that say curb your dogs. And on a better note, Happy Valentine's Day, all. Have a good night.
Charles next. Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mary. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank all of our public responders, our police department, our fire department, especially for the incidents that we just had throughout the month. Our D P W for keeping our roads clean and safe and solid so we could move around and our sidewalks and a lot of the other issues that we've had throughout town with water main breaks and everything. Uh, our C E O's, uh, take care and look out for them. I usually make the announcement on the rework meeting and everything too, but folks, when you go home, check your smoke alarm. Make sure the battery is good. Make sure your C O two alarm is good and it works, okay? With that, Happy Valentine's Day and everyone, thank you.
Councilman.
Thank you. Um, E D C will be meeting on February the nineteenth. Uh, we're working with the company right now, or Be Real, which is going to be registering businesses in town on different things that they are going to either sell discounts, promotions, specials for the day. And the residents can join this. And as, if they want to go to one of the restaurants downtown, they can take their little card that they'll get. They'll scan it and it'll tell them you have twenty percent off today. Or you have a free appetizer or whatever the case may be. So that's going to be coming in. Um, the E D C is going to be walking around with the company to try and get some of the businesses registered. The bleeder is a bunch already. And then we can get it out to the residents too. So that's one thing that's happening with the E D C. Uh, the other thing is, as everyone is saying, fire department, um, we've had, as the chief stated, forty alarms this month. Um, the chiefs have been very busy with mutual aid calls coming in. We just had major structure. We lost, chief, what is it, four structures, five structures it was? Uh, we were back there again this morning for a rekindle in a basement. And, uh, people don't realize that it's all volunteers. We volunteer our time twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So with that, um, we are welcoming anybody who would like to join the fire department as a volunteer. We need. We need people, we need people to come down and join us. We have to have manpower at all times. So if you wanna join, come down to Fire Headquarters on Jackson Street, check and get an application, fill it out, depending on where you're living, um, you can go up to Station One, which is Jackson Street, or Station Two, which is up on Appleby Avenue next to the library. So we need to get some more volunteers, so please, come on out. And with that, uh, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody have a great time.
First of all, I want to congratulate Sergeant Brian Heistop, I know he has been a great, uh, police officer now, he's also gonna be a leader and better, uh, I guess you could say, uh, leader, uh, moving up in the ranks. As we all, uh, spoken about the fire, a lot of people don't realize that with volunteer firefighters, there's a lot of back to, a lot of backdoor to this, uh, for example, uh, we lost a whole house where a family lives now without a house. Uh, Kenny Bell of, uh, helped with Officer Beijing helping them that same day. O B M did a remarkable job of getting Red Cross out there. Uh, Beth Lucas helped out with the food bank, uh, Linda Rosano, uh, at the God's, uh, closet, uh, thrift store, helped with the clothing for the family, and we are still looking for aid, aid to the family. But you don't realize that although it was just one house that we lost, we actually lost two houses and four other houses that were actually affected. It was not a joke, when I tell you, somebody, please, somebody, seventy, seventy firefighters came out. Several towns helped with taking down this fire. Um, we, these, we must have used well over half a million gallons of water just to put something out. Tell you what, it could have been worse, it was at night and there was a whole lot of danger. I wanna thank the fire department for what they have done, continue to do. Like I said, like he said, we're all volunteers and continue to be volunteers. We don't ask for anything more than just come out and join the, the group. Collin Drive, it's been a long awaited, um, stressful road that has been, uh, for years, I had the opportunity to speak to, uh, Bob Segetti, our mayor from, uh, God knows, back in the nineties, to, uh, Mr. uh, Crenzil to speak into the residence of Collin Drive as well as to connecting with roads. I had the opportunity to do my, my investigation on this whole entire project. When I tell you the amount of cars that went up that road the wrong way at any given time of the day, any given time of the season, any given time of the hour, they did it. The police department did a, um, a spheriot, a traffic study, spheriotic, uh, from morning rush hour to lunchtime and afternoon rush hour and even the evening, from the month, uh, days of January third to January twenty third. Well over a hundred fifty-five minutes of so many police officers contributing to the actual detail. Other than that, there was two violations. Now, you heard this earlier, and when you see a police car, you're gonna deter, you're gonna go the opposite way. It surprised me, these two police, I'm sorry, these two violations all came from Otte Cellaway. And it's sad because they're locals. I like to meet the person that lives in that area and willing to actually have the nerve to knock out a door either on Collin Drive or any of those connecting roads after a loved one has been either hit by a car or killed and say, I'm sorry. I challenge that to anybody that cuts through that road, thinks it was okay all this time. I gave you fair warning way back in November that we were gonna sit there and watch you do it, we did. Hundreds and hundreds of videos I have, literally. Some sort of residents of Collin and all the connecting roads, we heard you and we answered. Redevelopment, here we are, we're working on another redevelopment starting this year, which is gonna be, uh, the, uh, bottom of Main Street once again, which is gonna be the old Bank of America. Uh, South River is moving forward, we are trying to bring in as much as we can. It's not an easy process, it's small steps, but it's gonna get to a bigger, uh, prize. Break-ins, love when people hide behind the phone, this is your weakness. The weakness is when you run to social media and you start to talk about how your house or you heard about a house that got broken into. But yeah, what you don't know is it's happening all around the whole entire town. It wasn't just in this one area. I can tell you, last year it happened in so many parts of the town that we didn't publicize it cuz nobody hid behind the phone, they basically did the right thing by calling the police. Now, what you don't know about the police is we have about thirty-two or so police officers that work hard every single day. At any given one time, you have three police officers out on the road patrolling the roads. Even if I had a hundred police officers in this town for one squad, somebody's still gonna speed, somebody's still gonna break into a house, somebody's still gonna do mission, it's a fact. The best kind of crime, the best kind of deterrent is you. It's called a crime watch, you see something that's out of the ordinary, you call the police. Don't sit there and say you're bothering them, this is what they do, they get paid to do this. This is, this is your tax money, working hard, call the police. It's as simple as that, any time of the day, at night, a call came in at two thirty in the morning, who would have known? I had a call come in last year at one o'clock, who would have known? Sure enough, that suspicion happened to be in somebody trying to break into a house. Suspicion, call the police, that's all I have to say. Other than that, I wanna wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day, try to enjoy it, have a good one.
Motion.
Motion by Council President, second by Councilman DeZini.
On favor?